You are on the record.
Good morning. Today is Tuesday, May 11th. The time is nine o'clock. The board is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. Also with us-
We're all presidents. I like that better.
Also with us are-
Erin Saridi from HR.
Erin Saridi from HR and Kimberly-
Kimberly Eastman from the clerk's office.
Yes, Kimberly. And we have Bob Batista and-
Trent Klein, treasurer's office.
Yes.
Tracy James, clerk's office.
And we have Bob, the IT guy, and Richard. And we have a whole bunch of people on the bridge there. Okay. We have a change to the agenda this morning to add emergency rental assistance program funding. This addition was made inside 24 hours because we just got notified yesterday that it was available. So may I have a motion to make the change to the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move to amend the agenda to add item 615, emergency rental assistance program funding to the agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there a discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Add it to the agenda. We're going to open the meeting today with employee recognition. I'll ask Commissioner Canyon to read the synopsis into the record.
Great, thank you. Welcome, Kimberly.
Thank you.
So Kimberly, 20 years with Ada County. Kimberly began her career with Ada County on May 7th, 2001. She came from Micron where there had been many layoffs, creating an uncertain work environment. Kimberly sought better job security benefits and, of course, Percy. Yes, her 20 years of employment with Ada County has seen numerous changes. Upgrades to the computer system three times, no fun. Physical files to electronic filing, carrying around physical files and having to haul them upstairs in the elevator to now being able to move documents around the courthouse at the click of a button. And most recently, the shift from physical court proceedings in front of a judge to Zoom hearings, which were unheard of just a few years ago.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Kimberly began working at traffic court and barrister. And there are only four clerks left in the clerk's office, they can say that. In the beginning, she processed judgments and answered phones and was then moved- and was then moved workloads where she pulled all the files that were needed for court each day and delivered them to the judge's clerks. When we moved to the new courthouse in 2002, she was part of the team that moved all the files from traffic court and district court to the new courthouse on Front Street. A huge task that she really enjoyed being a part of. That is a big task, physical files.
It was fun, though. It was-
You really know how to have fun.
Very detailed and very- a pretty big task, but it was fun. I enjoyed it.
I can imagine. Then, over the next few years, she moved around, a lot in the clerk's office, and learned various tasks: notices, judgments, opening the mail that comes into the clerk's office every morning, working the filing window, filings window at the front counter, and posting payments we receive in the mail. Kimberly loves learning and expanding her knowledge of the court process. In 2009, she headed up the tax intercept and collections program. These are programs put in place to collect unpaid fines due to the court. Due to the court. Due to the court. In 2019, Kimberly became lead for the criminal support team, and this is her current position. She loves her current position and enjoys working with her team, supporting them and helping them achieve their goals and perform their tasks as criminal court clerks. On a side note, Kimberly previously belonged to Porsche Club of America and has many opportunities to race Porsches and love it. Nine elevens?
Yes.
Nine elevens are fast.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah. Good for you. Good for you.
Well, nice. Kimberly's supervisor, Tracy James, is also with us. Would you like to say a few words?
It's- I'm a fairly new supervisor, so I've only had the pleasure of knowing Kimberly for a couple of years now. And- but everyone speaks so fondly of her and everyone just enjoys working with her. She is truly a pleasure and just it's awesome to have such an employee working great account.
Right. Anyone else like to say any- a few words?
Mr. Chair, Phil McGrane's up there from the clerk's office. I'm sure he does if we can hear him.
Would Phil McGrane like to say a few words?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
We can. Can't see. Oh, there you are.
There he is.
There we go. Hi, good morning, commissioners, and more importantly, Kimberly. Sorry, I am not there. Racing over and I had to just realize I was not gonna be in time, so I'm standing. So I will see you here very shortly, but I do want to recognize Kimberly. I've definitely had the pleasure of working with Kimberly, especially when she did the tax intercept program. As you read, Mr. Canyon, not only has she hopped around, but that has helped her serve as a lead in our office, assisting so many other training, assisting a wide variety of way- other people. And if you're ever down in our office, you head by the elevator, that's right where Kimberly is. And it's because she's well-positioned to help people as they come by and does every day helping the clerk's office work and help the clerk. So it's awesome to be able to recognize her, and I loved the reading, the number of software systems changes that she has seen from the days with Phyllis and everybody else to where we are. It's been huge. And so Kimberly, thank you for all your work for stuff in years and just the consistency in the office. I think it really speaks volumes to who you are and your dedication to the county.
Thank you.
And sorry, I'm not there.
Okay.
We forgive you.
Okay. Well, Kimberly, you've also gone through three clerks, have you not?
Yes.
We have.
Well, we're on the third.
On the third. Well, yeah, on the third, yeah. Yeah, on the third, yeah. So not fully three, but you've had three clerks.
Yes.
Yeah, well, so that's longevity in and of itself. Yes. Well, thank you for your service to the county and your long term.
Thank you.
The county benefits every time we have a long term report. It's a benefit to the county. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Especially one with your can-do attitude and your personality.
Yes.
Definitely appreciate it.
Yes, appreciate it. Thank you.
We're gonna do a picture if you wanna go stand under the seal, I think, with the chair.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
All three of us can go up there now. We've all been vaccinated, but that's okay. We'll just do the chair.
Okay, well, thank you for your service to the county.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
One, two, three. Hold that pose.
Thank you.
I'm gonna take a couple more, okay? One, two, three.
There you go.
And one more.
One more.
For good measure. One, two, and three.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you. Got it? Yep, got it.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for all your good work.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Another 20 years.
Another 20.
We've had people here 36, I think.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Well, you've been here 40, haven't you?
Just like it.
That was good, Bob.
Especially today.
Yeah. Okay, and now to unfinished business. May I have a motion to remove unfinished business from the table?
This is Mr. Chair. I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Do you want to have a second to the motion?
Second.
Remove the second to remove the unfinished business from the table. All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, we have a word of a bid for Ada County Juvenile Court Services, switchboard replacement. Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, the evaluation team for bid 21045, the Ada County Juvenile Court Services Generator and Switchboard Replacement 2021, has reviewed the two bids submitted. One bid was non-responsive for not having a licensed public works contractor as a subcontractor. And the other bid that we received was over budget. We have a letter with the evaluation team's recommendation for your consideration. But before I give you that letter, I'd like to pass out kind of a synopsis here of the bids that were received and-
Okay.
So the letter is dated May 11th, 2021, and it's to the Board of Ada County Commissioners. Regarding bid 21045, dear members of the board, after reviewing the two bids submitted by Power Plus Incorporated and Anderson and Wood Construction Company, is the recommendation of the evaluation group to reject the bids. The $369,729 bid submitted by Anderson and Wood Construction was non-responsive due to the subcontractor's public works license being expired. And Power Plus Incorporated had a bid of $429,993, and that came in over the budgeted amount of $315,000. The operations department would like to request to procure the Ada County Juvenile Court Services Generator Switchboard Replacement on the open market to maintain costs within budget. The operations department solicited two quotes for open market research from other area contractors. Quality Electric Incorporated submitted a quote for $361,000, and Prime Electrical LLC submitted a quote for $266,209.24, which is $48,791, less than what was budgeted. For this reason, the evaluation team recommends to procure the generator and switchboard replacement more economically on the open market.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
I'll entertain a motion.
So, Mr. Chair, before we state the motion, so Prime Electrical, we only have one. Actually, the other ones are all over budget.
They are.
For everyone, even though it doesn't state in here. Anderson Wood is also over budget, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, Mr. Chair, I'll move to reject all bids for bid 21045, Ada County Juvenile Court Services Generator and Switchboard Replacement 2021, and procure on the open market.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Remove the second to reject all bids. All in favor say aye.
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 Thanks, commissioners.
Good for them.
Thank you.
We'll bring back a resolution next week for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. You're welcome. I'm now going to open a public hearing on resolution 2625. Is there anyone like to provide public testimony?
Mr. Chair, I might just note for the record that this is the 1 point, approximately 1.6 million that we received from the CARE Act funding for IT jobs at various locations.
Yes, it's changed to the budget. It's an unscheduled revenue for the information technology budget. Is there no one else that would like to make?
Doesn't look like a mayor's here.
Okay. I'm now going to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to thank Steve Amer and Steve Rutherford. This project was thrown in their lap, and they spent a lot of time and effort doing the initial application and making sure that these projects were up and running within the timeframe, which was a very tight window. So they really worked overtime and were able to accomplish this. So I just wanted to acknowledge them.
So we're thanking the Steves.
Thanking the Steves. Should we throw one more Steve in there?
Yes. Is there any other discussion from the board? If not, I'll entertain a motion on the resolution.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and move to approve resolution number 2625. It's listed on the agenda.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Remove the second and do approve resolution 2625. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
We'll now take up licenses. Is there any discussion on the 61 licenses and three new licenses? 61 renewals and three new licenses. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if Andy knows this, but the very last one, bodies in motion, why would they need a license?
Maybe they sold alcohol.
Bodies in motion, it sounds like a workout gym, right? Well, we'll look at it afterwards. I'm just curious more than anything.
Well, maybe we could ask somebody from clerk's office.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, Phil.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, the licenses that we're working through right now, obviously you've seen a long, a big wave of them come through. We started off with 919 businesses. Right now, we have 175 to go. We recently sent out a reminder to those that have not submitted license renewals, and that's been positively received. We're hoping that by the May 15th, to have all those applications in so that we can get everything finalized by the end of this month. You'll see some odd applications, but those have all been vetted properly and their paperwork's all in order. So if you have any further questions, I can answer any of those. And Phil, feel free to chime in if anything I missed.
Trent, the specific question was on bodies in motion.
Yeah, it looks like they do pre-teen camps, preschool, kids' martial arts. So I'm just wondering why they need a license?
A beer and wine license.
Sat there for two hours. No, I didn't say that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Canyon, I'm pretty sure in their beer and wine, they have a small cafe at Bodies in Motion.
Okay.
Keep a lot of parties, including adult activities, right? There are like eight nights out at Bodies in Motion, and I think it, that's why it's a beer and wine license.
All right. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including three new licenses and 61 license renewals, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Is there for the discussion? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Phil?
I'm walking up the stairs, maybe over the clerk's office with you.
Okay. Well, we can do a claim journal, then we'll come back to you. I'll entertain a motion on the claim journal.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated May 7th, 2021.
Is there a second?
Second.
Remove the second and approve claim journal. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Next, our personnel actions. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the commissioner's office.
I'll second that.
Remove the seconded to approve the personnel actions. All those in favor say aye. All right?
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have the assessor, Bob McQuaid.
Oh. Morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I'm just gonna talk briefly about two things. One, motor vehicles, and then about assessment notices that are about ready to come out. Motor vehicles, we are seeing signs of improvement there. It's nothing close to where we were before or where we want to be, but we are seeing signs of improvement. The maximum wait times, we're seeing those go down. They're still excessive three hours, but we were seeing four, four and a half hours several weeks ago. And again, when I say the wait time is three hours, that doesn't mean they're standing in line for three hours. They will come up, check in, and then they, for two and a half hours, are free to go about doing their business. And I get comment cards, a lot of comment cards, where people are just really pleased with the way that we're managing DMV through these difficult times. We authorized 10 positions a while back. Those- so we had 10 positions to fill. We had four vacancies because people leaving. So at one point, we had 14 positions to be filled. We now are down to three. All but three positions have been filled. We have seven interviews this week, so we're really getting that fully up to speed where we should be. So that's with motor vehicles. Again, we're still kind of bouncing along the bottom, but we're certainly are beyond the inflection point, and I'm just getting to be very encouraged. But we have assessment notices. Those are going out in just about three weeks. Just want to mention with the House bill that was passed just the other day, that is really kind of throwing a cake in what we're doing. At this point in time, we're usually not allowing any changes to the role at all. But with that new bill, homeowners exemption has increased from $100,000 to $125,000. We need to make that change before we can do anything, but we can't make that change until the bill has been signed or vetoed by the governor. And he has until, I think it's 10 o'clock tomorrow or something, to sign that bill. But we're ready to go if that bill is signed to increase the homeowner's exemption to $125,000. We have a couple more ripples in all of this that are adding to the difficulty that the new construction role, the new construction role would have a change in use of land. So for example, if you had a piece of agricultural land that you have now subdivided it and increased the value, that would be added to the new construction role. Well, that now stays on exempt as ag land or whatever the previous status was until their actual improvement is starting to be put on the land. That exemption's gonna last longer. We will have to make an allowance for that if this bill is signed. And then also, we have the site improvement exemption. As soon as construction was started on the lot, the site improvement exemption, that was pulled. Well, now it's not until the completion of the improvement is the exemption stays in place until the completion of the building. So that is making a change in how we do our business. And again, we literally have just days, probably less than a week, to make all of these changes. So that's what's going on. Right now, it's, like I say, we're getting ready to send out assessment notices. It's gonna be about over 210,000 assessment notices, and those are going out in just about two and a half weeks. So, Mr. Chairman, all commissioners, that's what's going on in the assessor's office right now. It just seems to be never-ending.
Bob, do you get those assessment notices printed locally, or do you print them at your own shop, or how do you do that?
Mr. Chairman, we have those printed locally by a vendor here. Years and years and years ago, we had those printed in the office. I'm talking about 25, over 27 years ago, those were printed in our shop. We farm those out to a local vendor, and it's been really successful.
Can you use a local mailhouse to mail them as well?
Uh, yes.
All right. Any other questions, Mr. Chair? Yes.
Bob, do you anticipate getting inundated with phone calls after the assessments go out and people see how much their taxes have gone up?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davidson, we do, we obviously had a lot of phone calls. That's sure. Whether it's gonna be more than years past, I, we don't know. Want to be able to, I think, just suggest, I mean, be able to go down the path that, yeah, we're trying to have a lot of calls because we're looking at a 25% median increase in value. That certainly would lead one to believe that we're gonna get more than usual number of phone calls, but I've been surprised before. And I also just might add that I just did an interview with KBY Radio a little bit earlier this morning where we had talked about that, and they had asked that same question, and I gave them the same answer.
Would it be helpful to maybe have a website, video message, you know, special page that anybody could be directed to to sort of go over all the frequently asked questions that we're gonna get?
Do that on our homepage, a reference to another link? Yeah. I'll check with our staff on that.
Okay, thank you.
And we do have a session on our homepage of frequently asked questions.
Yes. I read in the paper where you ran for coroner at one point in time. How'd that go?
Well, I found out it was just a dead-end job, so I decided to just run for the assessor.
Oh, you've been practicing.
You teed it up for him, though. Oh, yeah. All right.
Sorry to ruin your day.
Yeah, that's fine. Well, thank you. Any other questions for our assessor?
Mr. Chairman, it might be worth, Commissioner Davidson, to your question, Bob's staff has developed a really good website that goes through the whole process of how the assessments work, how they interrelate with the taxes. You can kind of scroll through. It's a little tutorial that walks through, and it's super useful.
I've gone through it. It's really good.
Yeah.
It is good.
For people looking at the BOE and their assessments, it really helps kind of outline how they get to those assessments.
It outlines the whole thing. It's a good-
It's infographic.
It's a good, it's good graphics. It's good. It's real self-complimentary. It's really good. Yeah, thank you. All right, thank you, Bob. Thank you. Now that we have our clerk showed up here, we'll go back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry for being late and trying to juggle too many things these days.
You're not running for coroner, are you?
Thankfully, no. The, just to piggyback maybe first off of what Bob was mentioning with the property tax bill, I anticipate it will be signed, I think, even likely today in terms of things. So we're already looking at what the implications are. I've gotten some media inquiries about it as well. One of the interesting things is we've done some modeling, so hypotheticals using past tax data. Say, by adjusting the homeowner's exemption to $125,000, what does that mean? And one of the, Cannon County had pointed this out first, but one of the unintended consequences is any home worth under $200,000 will actually see an increase as a result. Some of the burden will shift down as opposed to shifting up.
Didn't they keep in the bill, though, the 55% to account for that?
They did not. That was recommended, but that never, that never happened. Yeah, that's what would have compensated for that, and that never happened. So just an interesting thing.
Chairman, if I could just add on to something that Phil just said, we had done an analysis earlier, and with the way this bill is written, those who are below the maximum value will see just as much increase in taxes as non-occupied homeowners will see.
Yes.
The increase will be the same for either end. I'm sorry for that interruption, Phil.
No, Bob, a question maybe for you, just as it relates, because we're trying to look at it. For those properties that, say, are worth under $100,000, residential specifically, are most likely those lots? I mean, we're trying to figure out, you know, what would even be worth $100,000 that would be zoned residential at this point?
It would really just have to be probably, the large number of cases, almost all of them would have to just be bare land.
Okay, that's kind of what we assumed.
With maybe a trail, a mobile home on it or something like that. But as far as just an improved lot, like you would typically think, those would not be in that class.
Yeah, okay, that's kind of what I figured. Yeah, so we're trying to look at it for all the implications, just like they are. He's got the real pressure, I mean, but we're looking at the downstream effects. It's how it'll affect the budget. And an important distinction, too, for, I think you're all aware, but just because the assessed value rises does not inherently mean that the property taxes rise with it. And they, or for sure, they don't rise commensurate with it, right? So if you see a 27% increase or 50% increase, because I'm sure those exist in the midst of it, that does not mean it'll go up that much, but yes, we're continuing to see that shift more towards residential, picking up the burden. And I think it'll be interesting to see, this is where we don't know enough. Some of the other changes with personal property and other things, how does that counteract some of the benefit that was created by the increase of the homeowner's exemption? Because businesses are also getting some additional exemptions from this bill that may help. As much as it helped residential, it may shift it and neutralize a little bit of the benefit. So we're trying to figure that out as we gear up, and really, we're starting to gear up for the budget process. And we'll be having more conversations with you, but getting close. One question I have for you, just the past two years in different forms, we've invited public testimony during the budget process. We tentatively have something set up for that, but if you have any thoughts on how you would like to do that public testimony portion, I think, you know, we're looking from some guidance to make sure it's beneficial to you for what your needs are. And so whether that's now or at another point, please catch me. I would welcome your thoughts and advice on that public. I think the rest of it, we've got pretty well set. You know, it's just that public piece. We have some questions. Next Tuesday is Election Day. Very few people know that.
It's the library district.
It is. The Meridian and CUNA Library District trustee, so we don't anticipate, you know, very much attendance. I was out at the voting location in Meridian yesterday, and it's pretty much crickets out there. So we're seeing really low participation because of the nature of the races that are on the ballot. But it will be Election Day, so I will be out at elections most likely tomorrow, or next week at this time.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So is there, is that in statute that, is there a reason that we can't have those with regular elections so it doesn't take up time and money, resources?
Yeah, great question, Commissioner Canyon. It is, next Tuesday is one of the regular dates. There's four dates of the year. There could have, like, so we could have easily had bonds or levies, and there was a number of elections. So actually, one that usually would occur is the Greater Boise Auditorium District, and they just weren't, most of the other ones weren't competitive. And actually, typically, these library ones, you don't see competitive races for them, so they don't occur. So I think it does fit into the contrast. I was talking with Mayor Simison, and the contrast between what it looked like at City Hall in November for turnout for early voting and what it looks like now is, and you're right, the cost per vote is extremely high because it's such a quiet election. And so there's a lot of talk of that, but of- And so there's a lot of talk of that, but of, most of it's been focused, you know, this year on moving city elections and I think, which would actually just compound what we're seeing right now.
It is one of the four consolidating.
It is one of the, it is one of the regular dates. It's the same date that the primary will be next year, right? That is set for, these are for those nonpartisan offices that are up at this point. But there is always a constant conversation about consolidating things a little bit further to help with that.
And then, Mr. Chair, just to follow up, just for the record, Bob, do you want to clarify that not only did you not run for coroner, but that commercial properties are not increasing twenty eight percent? I think that was another error in that article.
We can clarify that. We, we can clarify that, that periodically we get fake news.
One other note, too, Mr. Chairman, we, I actually haven't gone. Oh, go ahead, Bob.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was trying to get some other work done. Yes, I talked to the, to the author of that story, Rachel, and explained to her that that was not even close to being right, that it was eleven percent. And she was, was embarrassed and she took, took full, full credit for the error on that. But yes, and when I talked to other groups, I made that point that it's not a twenty eight percent, it's an eleven percent increase on commercial.
Are they running a correction?
Are they running a correction on both you running for coroner and the twenty eight percent?
Especially the latter.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I had two other quick things of note, just, one, Beth may actually be able to confirm in her update. We were anticipating the American Recovery Plan Act first tranche yesterday. I never actually heard yesterday that it actually arrived. Beth may know, because I haven't seen any confirmation on whether it came. It was just that was the sixty days, so, you know, statutorily, that's what we were thinking we would see. So I don't know that we've actually gotten the money. So we're trying to gear up, we have a meeting with you next Monday to talk in much more detail regarding that. And then the other thing, I just think, I feel like I, because I haven't talked to any of you about, but the security concerns related to this building, right? We've had the gatherings and stuff. It's worth noting, my staff, and I would say also the judges on the second floor, there's a pretty high angst going on because of some of the targeted, you know, phones ringing off the hook and some of the threats and stuff. I know Judge Manuel, his cell phone number was published over the weekend, but I, I want to relay that, I'm involved in the Security Committee and stuff, but there is a segment because it's the people dealing with those cases, right, that feel a much heightened presence and concern compared to, I would say, all the rest of us in the building, just because of some of the things coming in. So it's just, one of the things we're trying to navigate and work with Sheriff's Office as we do, and I know it's falling right in the midst of this big security transition that isn't related to the protests, but, but it all kind of comes together.
Right. Well, well, that's unfortunate, but we'll just have to deal with that and do what we can to make sure our staff is safe. So, anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Mr. Chair, I just want to make a comment that I find it disheartening that they're turning violent. There were four arrests last week and one of our marshals was hurt. And that's just not okay. I mean, peaceful protests are one thing and that's great and we can carve out as much space down there as needed, but when it comes to turning violent, then I'm really pretty upset about it myself.
Well, we won't tolerate it either. I mean, we'll arrest those offenders that caused the, the offense and they'll be prosecuted. That's the main message that should go out, is that if there's any kind of actions like that, there will be arrests and there will be prosecutions, because that's not acceptable in this community.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I agree a hundred percent. Okay, any other, any other comments? Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for giving me patience.
Looks like it's a beautiful day out there.
It is a beautiful day. I can confirm that.
Yeah, well, great, well, thank you, thank you, all right. Next up, Treasurer's Office with the monthly, monthly treasures report. Jim?
Mr. Chairman, listeners. I can answer Phil's question about that money coming in, as of this morning, we have not received that. However, we do expect it to come in as a Fed wire, and so that could come in anytime today and we'll monitor that. So we, we check every morning and balance the accounts. And then when we expect a wire, because the Fed wires come in throughout the day, we'll monitor it. As soon as we do, we'll notify the clerk's office and we do have a place for that money to be parked.
Where is that?
It's at the State Treasurer's.
LJIP?
It's not in LJIP, we're, initially, we're going to move it into the LJIP account because that's the one that's tied to our deposit account at the bank. And then we've set up a separate fund specifically for that. It'll be segregated that way. Any interest that's earned on that will remain in that fund. Yeah, so we can keep it completely segregated from the rest of the county.
Because it won't be very much, interest is so low. Even on ninety four million dollars, it's.
Yeah, and we're expecting about half of that in this tranche.
The first tranche will be about half?
Right, yeah.
Because it's over a two-year period.
I'm not sure when the second.
Oh, I mean, disbanded, it's over.
Disbanded, it's two years, yeah.
I don't know about that.
The second must be more than a year from when we receive the first. That's how it's listed.
What is it?
More than a year, so whenever we get the first payment, it has to be over a year before we can get the second payment. When over a year, it doesn't say, it just says more than a year later.
We also have on, on our agenda today, the, the second phase of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, and so we, we will be applying for that. So you'll get another chunk of change from, I don't know how long that will take. What they, what they told us, they told us yesterday that today was the deadline and we haven't been able to file for it yet, so then we have to get it in, in order. They'll take the application in order of receipt, so it could be a while.
We'll keep an eye on it.
But anyway, you'll, we'll get another twelve and a half million dollars, probably. Okay, anything else?
So the, the April month-end report for the investment portfolio I have here, and the significant changes in this particular month in April, we, we had a couple of maturities, small CDs, two CDs.
I left my report in the office, do you have an extra one? Thanks.
So we had two, two CDs that matured and one municipal bond. So the total on that was only three hundred fifty seven thousand for those three, relatively small. And we made additional mortgage-backed security purchases of just over thirteen million. So at this point, at April thirtieth, our market value on those mortgage-backed securities about fifty two million, three hundred eighty three thousand. And so we're kind of now near the level where we had wanted to get, where you may recall in prior discussions that we, looking back at our history, we, we realized that we have about a hundred million of liquidity needs. And so we have a hundred forty two million in LJIP, and that's our primary liquidity bucket. And then our mortgage-backed securities, fifty, fifty two million, our federal agencies, forty one million, and then our diversified bond fund, eleven million. So that's about a hundred million in our investment portfolio, separate from the liquidity portfolio. Those were the significant changes. In terms of balancing items, we did have a few balancing items, which I included in the, the last page. Most of these are cleared up because they're typically just a carryover item that goes from one month to the next.
Twenty one thousand.
Yeah, twenty one thousand total. In fact, everything is cleared up as of today, I believe, except for the ADP checks, and that's the one where I had been including the Excel spreadsheet on the back. And then I, you know, I realized you probably don't need the specific checks, I'm just circling the total on there. But that's going to continue as long as we're having the issue with Fab and our new eight essential system, but they're working on that and it'll be cleared up at some point. Other than that, those were our significant changes. Everything is going pretty, pretty good with the investments. We're continuing to monitor yields, if you're paying attention to that, they've been a little bit volatile, but they're still very low. And so the choices that we have aren't great. We can get low or slightly low, lower. That's about, that's about.
Lower, lower.
Lower, a little lower than low.
We'll work on some legislation this next year to change your investment opportunities.
We'll work on that a little bit.
Yeah, and then in terms of the Treasurer's Office, beyond the investment, the only update there, really what we're working on right now, is our, our notices for the second half tax payments. They go out right about the same time as assessment notices. So we, we get a lot of calls because I think the public sometimes will confuse the Treasurer's Office with the Assessor's Office and vice versa. So we, we have each other on speed dial and we can transfer back and forth, which we do often.
All right, well, that's good. All right, and anything else? Jim, appreciate your, I reviewed the report and I don't have any questions. Do you have any questions? No. Do you have any more questions left?
Just to keep an eye on the, still in the horizon, but the twenty four maturities, that amount is quite a bit higher than we've seen consistently in twenty twenty four.
Oh.
The maturity, it jumps up to fifteen million. Usually we're seeing at the end of the year, three, five, whatever, so it's just significantly more. That's in the horizon, so I can worry about it yet.
Well, thank you, Jim.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Do we have Jess, is he out in the hallway or anything?
He is out in the lobby.
Well, you might want to invite him in. Look, it's our new management team.
Yay. Have a seat.
Have a seat.
Welcome.
That's fine.
I've been vaccinated, so I think I'm safe.
We're just following CDC guidelines. Which, has he been vaccinated?
Good guideline.
There's no chance, no, no sense in wearing masks indoors. That's what they say. And so here we are. So if.
All right.
All right.
Well, thank you, yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners.
Sure.
Thank you for the opportunity to introduce the new management team out at the landfill, our Solid Waste team. As you know, we've been in a bit of transition with management out there and we're excited. We've had two very good candidates join us and they're helping us, not only with all the operational things we're doing at the landfill, but us helping change the culture as well to one of respect and camaraderie and teamwork. And, and these guys, they've only been with us about, about a month or so, but already diving in and doing a great job. We're really lucky to have them. So I'm going to let them introduce themselves a little bit, tell us a little bit about their background. So first we have Tom Adi, who's the Deputy Director of Solid Waste.
Hi, Tom.
Hi, Tom.
Tom Adi, like, like Jess said, Deputy Director of Solid Waste. I've been in the trash industry pretty much my entire working career. I started with Republic Services in two thousand and ten. I worked in Idaho, Oregon, Washington, Montana, for a short period of time in California with them. Then I left them, went to Next Gen Logistics in Oregon, which is the largest privately-held petroleum company in Oregon, then went to the city of Meridian to get some public sector experience and then ended up here.
Great, welcome.
Well, welcome. Now, the last time we were out there as a group, Commissioner Davidson got on one of your big outfits. You might want to make sure you have good insurance and so. Case that happens again.
So, Tom, what brings you to Idaho, to Boise? Why were you interested in this position?
Well, I actually grew up here, I moved to Idaho when I was six and being at the city of Meridian and seeing how the cities interacted with each other, I thought this would be a good opportunity to be able to kind of take a holistic approach to waste management countywide and, and kind of have the county lead on that, on the, not necessarily the cutting edge, but on the, be the leading edge of what kind of new programs and opportunities we could have for every city in the county and the county itself.
Are you going to be a representative on the SWAC committee or participate in those?
I hope so.
I don't know what staff members usually assign to that, but it sounds like.
I was last SWAC meeting, so I, I intend to continue doing so. I also have an opportunity to be a member of the Meridian SWAC as well to, and to help them out as well, so I'd like to do both.
Super.
That's the committee, Steve Corey's on, right?
Yes, sir, yes.
Okay, well, good.
And one of you was quoted in the paper.
That was me.
I was reading the paper, like, oh, we have a new director, Deputy Director, yay. You sound very intelligent, good.
Yeah, that was around Earth Day, so we should be, we should be prepared, better prepared next year that they're, they're going to reach out to us around Earth Day and want to do a story, so we'll, we'll let you know ahead of time what, what's, that's going to look like, but.
They won't ambush me on my second day.
It was like your second day on the job.
Okay, well, good.
You did a great job handling that, though.
Well, welcome to Ada County, and we're looking forward to, pause things, I guess you, you're in the middle of that pipeline thing.
Yeah, RNG, we're going to start doing that here soon, so that's a big project out there. We have some other diversion efforts as well, and we already do, you know, tires and, and refrigerators and recycling things, but we're, we're looking at some other things, too, some construction and demolition and like concrete, asphalt, some things like that. So there's a lot of things going on out there.
Have you started a new steel builds, building out there yet?
We're in the, kind of the designing and, and bidding phases of that right now.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, do you have experience in renewable gas projects?
Kind of. So when I was with Republic in Oregon, they were building an anaerobic, they were in the process of building an anaerobic digester on site to work with Metro, which is a layer of government between city and county in Oregon. And so I was getting all the training to run that and then that project ended up falling through because the pricing was too high. So not much, but I have a lot of information about it in my brain.
Well, that's great.
All right, well, thanks, Tom, happy to have you here. Also want to introduce Steve Porter, he's the operation supervisor out there. So the whole crew that we hired is we brought operations in-house this fiscal year. We have a, a large team, two different shifts, front half of the week, back half of the week, the operators on all the equipment, all that. So Steve kind of handles that whole crew, so.
Fondly known as Pushin' Pack.
So Steve, so Steve decides who, who sits on those big, big.
That's right, so, yeah. If you want to get out there and ride one, Steve's the guy to talk to.
We can make that happen. If you let, if you let Commissioner Davidson on, I don't want to get on.
Not at the same time.
No, not at the same time. No, well, anyway, yeah, well.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Everybody, so my name is Steve Porter, born and raised Idahoan, right here in Boise. Spent seventeen years, roughly seventeen years, with Idaho Transportation Department. I worked my way up from a TT all the way up to the foreman position. Spent ten years in the Haley Stanley areas foreman and then transferred down here to Caldwell and then resigned there. Yeah, very excited to be with Ada County. It's a great, great experience as of so far, so, yeah, just really excited about it. Great bunch of.
Excited to have you.
Great bunch of people out there, for sure.
Well, good, well, welcome to the, to the team.
And I apologize, they did not hire me for my speaking abilities, so.
They didn't elect any of us for speaking ability, so, you're good. Well, we're excited to have both of you on board and, and really see, you know, I think we're expecting some, some really great things out there, especially, you know, Jess also stepping in and kind of helping to, to guide where we're going and, and hopefully we can, you know, reduce waste and really kick up our educational program. We've been talking about one for a couple of years, but to actually get that position, like be hired, you've hired for that, I'm not sure, but, but that'll be great. And we've got Trashy, right? We got to get Trashy in the schools when the kids are back in school and kick that off.
That's right. Yeah, a lot of great things going on at the landfill, so happy to have these guys help us leave the efforts.
What size is that Trashy? What size is the Trashy uniform? Is it small, medium, large?
There's two different sizes, we have two different ones, so kind of a, a medium one and a large one.
Okay, so next time.
So many different people can, can be Trashy.
Well, maybe next time, Commissioner Davidson, that you're going to do that, put on the uniform, then drive the tractor. So we can do video of Trashy doing his job.
Sounds good, well, thank you for the opportunity to introduce our new team.
Sure, absolutely.
Nice meeting you, too.
Good luck.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
That would be great, I'll get on the other one.
You can get on the other machine, yeah.
Be directing traffic up there.
Yeah, I want to watch that one.
Set up an obstacle course.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, chime it.
Well, you know, last time we were out there, they just tipped over one of those machines. It was a big one. Anyway.
All right. Richard.
We have Richard Beck with us regarding the final plat.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, appreciate your willingness to take up Hazelwood Village subdivision, subdivision number 18, phase one. This is a 74 locked residential subdivision and staff has reviewed it and finds that it complies with county code, state code, and recommends that the board authorize the chair to sign the plat.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
These are typically not seen in OBM meetings on Tuesdays. These are typically on our agenda at the beginning of our public hearing meetings, but the reason we're having them in OBM is because?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Kenyon brings a good point. With the development pressure, there's a lot of interest from the developers to get their plats signed as soon as possible. I mean, in this case, we do have a public hearing tomorrow night, but this will allow the developer to pick up this plat today instead of Thursday morning. So I guess every day counts to them. So we're trying to accommodate them as best as we can. We appreciate your willingness to allow these to show up here.
Well, we appreciate that and they're going, the development community is going through a difficult time, I would say. They have a gigantic market and not enough supply and, and costs of their products are going sky high. Like I spoke to a developer last week, said his average sale price is like doubled, but his net profit margin is about the same as it was before because of the cost, huge increase cost in, in product. Lumber, like 100, 200% increase. Copper just doubling last, oh, it's just crazy. But anyway. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Sure, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the Hazelwood Village number 18 final plat and authorize you, the chair, to sign and stamp the final plat on behalf of the board.
Is there a second to the motion? Second. We move and second it to approve the final plat, Hazelwood Village number 18. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Richard. Next up, we have minutes. I'll entertain a motion on the minutes. The minutes for open business meeting for 3:23, 4:13, 5:04. Indigent services, 3:31, 4:28, public hearing, 4:14, and exemption hearing, 4:29.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye. All right?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, grants. We have grant application for Public Defense Commission for indigent defense formula financial assistance. We have Tony here. You want to tell us all about, Tony?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Davidson.
Me too.
Good to see you again.
I'll answer any questions you have. It's, it's about $1.3 million that we get from the state uh, every year to help supplement our delivery of indigent defense services. So with that money, I have hired seven additional attorneys, two additional investigators. We now have eight investigators in the office and one legal assistant. And so that has really helped our caseloads go down with those additional attorneys. The money has also been used for, for training. We send our attorneys. Uh, we have a very robust training program, well, we did before COVID. Where we send our attorneys to some of the best child school skills courses, death penalty seminars, et cetera, around the country. So really been helpful in training our attorneys. So that's what the money is used for. It's a formula assessment. Uh, they give us 15% of what our local share here, here is for Ada County. And so that typically is, is around the $1.3 million range. And so that's what we anticipate getting from the state again this year. It's critical money.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So this comes from the, um, the commission, right? The defense commission, but doesn't have to be, does have to be appropriated every year by JFAC?
Correct.
Okay, so every year. So does the amount vary much from year to year or has it been fairly consistent?
It can. I think we've talked about this a little bit. I had saved some money from previous grants because I thought that was prudent. They didn't like that. And so they cut my grant back last year because, uh, up for the amount that I had saved. So they're sending the message, spend it or lose it, which I really don't like. But there's no shortage of attorneys and staff that I need with the population booming, cases are spiking and we all spend the money. So the, but to your point, Commissioner Kenyon, the reason I s- I, I was intentional about setting aside some money is the legislature has to apportion that money every year. And what happens in a year when something goes wonky and they don't? All of a sudden I have to come to you and say, I've got 10 employees that I can no longer fund, right? And, and so I wanted hedge my bets against that ever happening and keep enough money in the bank to help bridge that gap. But they're not going to allow me to do that. So every year the legislature has to apportion that money. And, and they're committed to it. I don't, I don't think they'll not do it, but one never knows.
How do they, uh, they, they appropriate a lump sum for the entire state? How does, how does that divvied out? Is it, is there a how's that, how's that determined that you get $1.3 million?
Yeah, it's an excellent question. They have two pots of money essentially. It's a fairly complicated process, but they have what they call formula grant assistance. So Ada County as an example, uh, we're funded at about $10 million. And so they give 15% uh, back to us. That's the calculation. 15% of what they call the local share. So every counties, every county's local share, what they pay for public defense, 15% of that is what you get for your grant. There's also a, uh, what they call workload compliance, uh, fund. And monies go to counties that, uh, cannot comply with the workload standards that have been established. And so you, so for those counties that really struggle, uh, with the money to, uh, support indigent defense, they get not only their 15%, but they also get an additional workload compliance, uh, pot of money, depending on how many attorneys and staff they need to hire to become compliant with the standards. Ada County, most, most, um, to give you perspective, 90% of Idaho's population is covered by institutional public defenders offices, Twin Falls, Pocatello, Coopney County, Canyon County, Ada County. And, and those are typically well-funded offices. What you find is the, uh, the more remote counties that really struggle, uh, with the funding for indigent defense, they get the majority of that workload compliance money. Idaho has 44 counties. Eight or nine of them now have institutional offices, uh, but the other 34, 35 counties that struggle a little bit more with funding, they get most of that workload compliance money. So the last I heard, Kathleen Elliott, the executive director, indicated that they had apportioned, uh, since the beginning of this, about $40 million. So.
Is the 15% retroactive? I mean, is it, do they take the 15% of last year's budget or or they project what 15% of this year's budget will be?
It is, uh, another good question, Chairman. Uh, they actually have a three-year average that they do a ratio on, right? So it's not just this year's budget, it's the last three. And, and it's kind of a complicated matrix. Phil probably knows more about it than I do. Uh, I don't do the math, that's why I'm a lawyer, but they have, they have a formula that assesses the local share over the last three years.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Yeah, thanks, Tony.
Thanks, Tony. I'll entertain a motion on grant number, uh, 2105A.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move to approve grant number 2105A as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second to the question?
Mr. Chair, I have a second.
We move and second it to approve grant number 2105A. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
Commissioners, good to see you.
Good to see you.
Okay, we have Expo Idaho. Are there questions or discussion on the three interim event agreements?
Sharkfest, that sounds.
That sounds fun, yeah.
So this is, uh, one of the events that when we first went into COVID, that was a kind of a car show that they bring all the younger kids come out with their, I call them rice burners. I don't know if we're another term for, but they're foreign cars and they come in here and then they do, they do a little, little dancing and they are something inside the center expo. So, um, this is going to be a repeat of that event, only it's going to, instead of being in a parking lot, it's going to be on the ground. So we're going to have a better control over how these folks get in and out of there, which last time when they did that first thing out of COVID, everybody wanted to do something. They came down there and it was overbearing for the, the promoter and us. So we got a better hand on that. The Vintage Market Days is just a vintage market that's in the center expo. Um, Safe Driving Clinic is in the west lot. All of these are not until June and July. Um, and so we'll be sending in the, the paperwork to CDH to get that done. It appears CDH is pretty much just send in the form, they'll stamp it and you go about your business. So as we get closer to fair, we'll see where we, if we have to do something for fair, but.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So I noticed that the Vintage Market is the Fourth of July weekend. Last year we were kind of working with city of Boise on where to have fireworks. Have you started those conversations?
I have not started those conversations. Usually they, they call me if they're thinking about moving in and I have not heard from them yet. So, um, I could make a call to them, but, um, and if they do that, uh, we'll have to figure out where we're going to do it. Um, we could do it out at the grandstand because we are doing those summer concert series. So we could make accommodations for them to do that. I have not heard from them, but they usually reach out to us if they're not going to do it.
Remind me what we did last year?
We didn't do anything.
They just canceled. They, we, we had conversations and then they decided.
They decided it was, the way they wanted to do it was they're going to put pods out in the parking lot and everywhere and it became pretty labor intensive for a free show on top of the fireworks. So.
All right.
So that's all I have, Commissioners. Um, you know, I, I do know that we have lent, lent the commi- uh, the office out there in front of the barricades and at some point, um, we'll probably have to take them barricades back as we get close to fair. But if you need some in the meantime, through crowd control, we'll have some available if you need any additional.
Well, hopefully we can get that resolved, but maybe not. Who knows?
Anyways, we're a partner and if we need any help.
Sure, sure. Okay. Uh, may I have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the three interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
I move and second it to authorize the three interim events. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Sure. Now we'll take a parks and waterways. Are there any questions or discussion on the, uh, items listed? There's one item.
One wedding.
One wedding.
Twenty, 22. So we should be safe.
It. It, uh, it, it should be.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the one Barber Park education event center agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Move and second it to, uh, authorize the Barber Park event. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, we have some agreements on today's agenda. Uh, we have a number of agreements. Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, it looks like we have a number of Western Idaho Fair agreements, Expo Ground agreements. In addition, we've got two internship agreements on here. So I'll go ahead, um, and make the motion to approve the eight agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
See you later.
You betcha. Yeah.
See you later tonight.
Yeah, yeah. Next up, we'll have, uh, lastly, we have a discussion on the Emergency Rental Assistance Program funding. Uh, if you'd like, if you'd like to fire us off on that, uh, one of the steves.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, uh, this notice came, uh, almost 2 o'clock on Friday. Janet sent it to me over the weekend. I looked at it yesterday morning. Started reading everything I could get my hands on. Uh, the application, uh, request was by 5 o'clock yesterday. So they basically sent it on Friday and they want you to, uh, to apply by Monday at 5:00. Um, it, the deadline was yesterday. It was kind of priority seating. So we can still apply. We'll, it will still be fine. Uh, I just wanted to make sure I had all the facts for you before we do. The new program is a little more broad. It will fundamentally alter what the state has going in that right now the state doesn't offer the rental assistance to, directly to the renters. The program as it exists now, uh, from the the housing authorities doing it the way it was designed, which is give the landlord an opportunity. If they don't get back to you within 14 days and agree, then you can give the money directly to renters. Um, the state doesn't do that. If the landlord doesn't want to take it, they don't, uh, they don't give them the money. This makes them give it directly.
Forces the state to do that.
Right? And in the first instance, uh, this will also, if you're a new supplier, like you've never gotten this before, you can go straight to the housing authority as a renter and just get it without, you skip your landlord. There's some eviction, additional eviction protections in this version. Uh, they're cutting down, uh, some timelines. They're cutting down paperwork requirements to try to make it easier, to try to lower barriers. They are also, they've, they've expanded this to, um, encourage financial assistance to support renters finding new housing. Currently you have to have a lease agreement, uh, and be in arrears. This will allow you to, if you're moving, you can get assistance to stay in a hotel for a transition. You can get security deposits, utilities, future rents, um, and moving expenses.
But it all has to be directly related to COVID.
Still, still has that requirement that it be related to COVID.
And has that criteria changed at all in the wording?
Not that, uh, not that they said, the, pointed it out in the, in the new FAQs. So to my knowledge, that stays the exact same, which again, decreasing pool of those people, I think. The, this, uh, money, uh, will is eligible to be spent between now, between whenever, whenever we get it and, uh, in September 30th of 2025. So currently we have till September of 2022. So this will go to 2025. We're still talking about COVID.
Did they expect there could be COVID-related emergencies that far out?
Yeah.
No, we're still talking about COVID.
That's going to be tough to draw the straight line between.
I think so. And I, and I think the theory, uh, Commissioners in, in taking this money is, uh, you know, maybe they figure out that there aren't COVID-related issues then and pivot and allow you to use it for some other purpose.
Other purposes.
So I know that, uh, and I'm sorry, Phil's not here. Phil had some concerns and his folks have some concerns about, about taking money when we've got the 94 million coming, when we've only used 1.7 to date of our current money, uh, from ER1.
And this is another 12.
This is, actually, they added Canyon County became an eligible entity. Um, and so now our, our amount is 9.6, uh, close to 9.7, and Canyon County is eligible now for 8.7. Almost the exact same amount of money the city of Boise is eligible for. So the state gets 152 total allocated to us. And after all, if everyone, all these, if Ada, Boise and Canyon take theirs, the state stands to get 124.7.
Steve, have you been tracking through NACO, how this program is going in other counties?
Just those articles. Uh, haven't seen anything actually on NACO. It's been other news sources.
But the New York Times article where, where there, where there's three or four states haven't even kicked off the first one yet because they're having difficulty.
And I know Janet's tracking that pretty significantly as well, but I have not seen anything on NACO relative to this.
Can you also check to see how many evictions that we have in the pipeline in the courts here? How many that we've seen in the last maybe six months and how many that are pending? That might give us an indication of people in dire straits. Maybe there's some way to communicate to those folks early on in that eviction process.
I think Canyon County could have applied the last go around, but it didn't.
It's.
Was it 500,000 population? There's a cutoff.
That, that may be, uh, Commissioner, I, I printed the, the amount of money that went out last time and it, and obviously it didn't have Canyon County in it, but, uh, you, you may, you may be right and the state got that money.
Yeah, well, that, that's what happened.
But here they have it, they have it listed out that they can.
I think they were eligible last time, but just, just didn't apply for it. So the, I, I think, you know, and it should be noted that, that in terms of monies paid directly to tenants, the housing authority has, has actually done that a time or two. But, but it's only a second resort. I mean, if, if the landlord refuses to take it. And there are some reasons why landlords would refuse to take it so they can give directly to the tenant and the tenant can pay that, can pay that the background.
So.
I think it's happened two or three times.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, to that end, this new program, um, says they strongly encourage grantees, so the housing authority, to require landlords not to evict tenants. So if you take this payment, we want you to add something to your lease that says you won't, uh, you won't evict these folks for 30 to 90 days after they haven't made another payment. So basically add something to their lease. My guess is landlords aren't going to be excited about that, but.
There's still a bit of time for it made away because. There's still be a timeframe anyway, because landlords don't want to.
Right, right.
They try to work with them to pay the rent.
So that's the that's the first thing I see in this, at least in the FAQs, where they want leases to change.
Okay, and so we need to fill out the application first, and then, because I know that was a two-step process, the last go around.
So if you all are in agreement that we should apply for it, I will get the application completed online and then we'll need you to sign it, when it's ready, we can have you sign it and then we can put it on next OBM for ratification.
Okay, do we need a motion for that?
I think so, I think it's just a thumbs up to go forward.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if all this extra money is gonna start to have unintended consequences with the the job market locally. I mean, we're already discussing that all the people are on unemployment, they're getting paid more to stay at home. Restaurants are reducing their hours, some might be going out of business. If you're also getting your rent paid for another two years, I mean, there's.
Huge unintended consequences.
It could have big unintended consequences.
It already is.
The difference, of course, is this has to be COVID-related, they have to have lost their job or reduced their income because of the virus. And and that's not the case with the with the other issues.
So, Mr. Chair, you may know this, or Steve, you might, how, like with the Housing Authority that's doing the statewide distribution, how are they checking whether these are COVID-related or not? What's the accountability measures?
Well, the Housing Authority is only doing Ada County and Boise City, I don't know what Idaho Housing is doing, they're doing.
Idaho Housing, yeah.
They're doing state, I don't know what they're doing.
I'm not sure, there is a way, if you show you've gotten unemployment, and you get the extra COVID money, you can just submit that, that's proof. But otherwise, it's a certification.
So it's falling back on Department of Labor's doing their job.
It's pretty, it's pretty skinny, it's a certification, it's some, it's you saying it effectively.
Just because they had unemployment doesn't mean it's necessarily COVID-related, so using that as a measuring stick is not completely adequate.
Well, it's supposed to be, to get that extra three hundred bucks a week, it's supposed to be COVID-related. They're supposed to be able to establish that that's the reason that they were unemployed, to get that extra three hundred bucks.
But as we know, DOL has been way behind in trying to do anything.
We don't know, we don't know what this is, so.
Otherwise, a lot of just certification from 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 folks, and the new plan suggests that we're supposed to make it easier for folks. They shouldn't have to be, it shouldn't have to be a big paper-intensive process to apply for this.
Well, we can, we can, once we, if we apply for the grant and get it, we can, we can actually discuss if we want to park it here. Because they've still got, they've got twelve and a half million left to go around, and our portion, they've only gone through about two, less than two million.
Less than two, but we're about ready to get another payment request, I think, from them for another two and a half million, but.
They've 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 trickled, they've gone, well, yeah, it's it's it's, the burn rate is really slow. And and they expect another surge because they paid three months' rent, and those three months are about up, until they're expecting possibly another another surge of that, and.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Can you check with Deanna to make sure, one of the things I didn't see on her list of being able to reach out to folks is the management associations, organizations, rental management groups.
Oh, property managers?
Yeah, property managers. They probably, you know, property managers probably manage seventy percent of all the rentals, if not more. And just, because they don't want to see people evicted either, move, so let's make sure that we get this info into their hands.
They probably knew about this before we did.
Probably.
They may not, you might be surprised. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Go land some more money.
We'll go. That's the easiest money you've ever landed.
That's right.
That's right.
We didn't see Steve O'Meara in here today, but tell him thank you, we did the receipt of unscheduled revenue, that one point six million into. Thank you to you and him.
Pizza party.
Yeah, pizza party.
All right, well, now be in recess.
You are on the record.
Good morning. Today is Tuesday, May eleventh, the time is?
Oh, good Lord, I don't know. Ten eighteen.
Ten eighteen. The Board of Commissioners is sitting as the Board of Emergency Medical Services District is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present. Also with us are Sean Rang and.
Ryan Londo.
Ryan Londo. So Madam Clerk, are there changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, on our new business, we'll open a meeting with a proclamation. Would you like to read the proclamation, Commissioner Davidson?
Whatever, what's gonna work best for your website.
That would be great.
Okay.
There's a lot of whereas.
Yeah, I know. Very familiar with resolutions and proclamations. All right, are you gonna be able to edit this to take out the, okay. All right, you ready?
Yes, sir.
All right. The Board of County Commissioners, Ada County, State of Idaho, proclamation to designate the week of May sixteenth to twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas, injury prevention and the appropriate use of the EMS system will help reduce healthcare costs, and whereas, emergency medical services providers have traditionally served as the safety net of our healthcare system, and whereas, emergency medical services systems consist of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others, and whereas, the members of the emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas, Ada County citizens benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals, and whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. And now, therefore, we, the Board of the Ada County Commissioners, Boise, Idaho, in recognition of this event, do hereby proclaim the week of May sixteenth to twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicely done, good inflection.
Yes. Sean, would you like to say a few words?
Well, you know, EMS Week is something that we do every year, and Ryan has put together several events. We're actually gonna be able to do some in-person stuff this year, where last year was pretty much just a social media push, and Ryan did a great job last year with that. We are having a barbecue on the Wednesday of that week out at our place on Benjamin, so if you guys are around.
Put that on our calendar.
Okay, yeah. We're gonna do some pulled pork and some different burgers and hot dogs, and Ryan, what else do we have going on that week so far?
So that week, we'll still have some virtual things for outward facing on our social media platforms, I'm planning a station tour. A lot of people in the community don't realize that we have our medics and EMTs that sleep at the stations, and they're there twenty-four hours in the community. Station tour, an ambulance tour, and then we'll also have an awards presentation for our EMTs and paramedics who participated in the vaccination clinic that we had at Idaho Ice World, that'll take place at the barbecue as well, and we'll do a social media push recognizing them on, I believe, Friday, because
Excellent.
National EMS Week has kind of a recommended schedule of things to put out via social media, and the Friday is kind of an awards day, if you will, so we'll get pictures and video of those awards on Wednesday and put them out Friday, so.
Great, you guys do a great job with your social media.
Oh, thank you very much.
So, Ryan.
It's all Ryan, good job, Ryan.
All right. Okay.
Well, that'll be great, Annie, can you make sure that Elizabeth Duncan is on there as well?
Yeah, sure.
So she can come out and and help promote, and if you've got any events or anything else in the meantime, just make sure.
When is your barbecue?
Wednesday, the eighteenth, is that right?
Let's see.
Nineteenth?
I thought that was seventeen.
Seventeen.
At, from noon to two.
Oh, my son's birthday.
No, you're right, that is Wednesday, the nineteenth, yeah.
That would be perfect for Matt.
St. Al's this week is actually, this week is.
National Hospital.
National Hospital Week, and so they've kind of combined, they have food trucks out there for our folks, when they show up, they can hit a couple of food trucks, they had barbecue yesterday, I think they had tacos and.
Euro Shack?
Euro Shack, yeah, they were providing, so, the hospital system has always do a good job helping us with that too, so.
Great. Well, may I have a motion on the proclamation?
Yes, Mr. Chair, make the motion. Move to approve the proclamation is listed on the agenda and designate the week of May sixteenth through May twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, as Emergency Medical Services Week. Yahoo.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Move and seconded to approve proclamation on Emergency Medical Services Week, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Canyon wanted a ride in the in the in an ambulance with the lights going out when we're out there.
We can do that.
He added the lights. If Ryan gets to go in the push and pack, you know, I can go in the EMS.
Okay. Next up is the Claims Journal, I'll entertain a motion on the Claims Journal.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims is listed on the Claims Journal dated May seventh, twenty twenty-one, regarding EMS expenditures.
I'll second that.
Move and seconded, authorize claims on the Claims Journal, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
We'll now take personal actions, may I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personal actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Move and seconded to include or approve the personnel actions, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Sean, do you have anything else you'd like to discuss with us?
Not a lot, you know, of course, we're gearing up for EMS Week. I did reach out last week to Alex Gross, the planning and zoning guy up in Boise County, I'm just waiting to hear back talk about Abamoore, but that's really about it. Kuna Fire has a meeting tomorrow, they're bored to decide whether they are or not going to get out of the ambulance service sometime this fall, so I'll keep you guys updated on the outcome of that meeting tomorrow, so that's.
How close are we to the agreement with Abamoore for EMS services?
I'll have to check with Axe, I'm not sure how far they've actually gotten, I believe he's reached out to the Abamoore attorney, and they're trying to craft something together, so.
Okay, we'll want to have, since usually we have EMS and Abamoore back to back, just have you guys stay.
Okay.
Okay.
Cool, well, we look forward to celebrating, yeah, the week with you guys, and if there's, again, anything that we can do to help promote it, send it on over and you've got, are you on the Just Calls?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so you can share all that info. Super.
Thank you.
Great.
Do you do boosts on your Facebook posts at all?
No, we don't. We, if, we have a budget for it, but I'd like to try to save that small budget for when it's appropriate, but we haven't yet.
What kind of click rate are you getting on your stuff?
I would say we we reach, on an average, probably in the thousands, a couple of thousands, pretty average, a good post is up over ten thousand. Likes are in the hundred to hundred and fifty range, is average good. So if it's something that's really kind of a really great topic, it might be two to three hundred range.
They're obviously more popular than we are.
Yeah, we don't get those kind of views until we give condolences to dead celebrities, so.
Yeah.
Probably Rush Limbaugh, yeah. Well, now we know, if you want a lot of, you know, actually, to say something.
Right.
Controversial.
Anyway.
Thank you so much, good to see you guys.
Word of the season.
See you, Ryan.
Word of the season, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, you guys have a.